This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the virtual board's meeting for Monday, June 29th. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed with new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harrys.us. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I do not have anybody that requests to speak, so we might be okay there. And at this time, I'll turn over the meeting to you.
Thank you, Scott. I'm waiting for the recording to start, then I will.
No, I see it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does very strange.
Okay, thank you, Scott. We opened the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 29th, 2020, at 6:00 PM this evening, in which we went into executive session. We discussed three items in executive session, the first being strategy regarding highways and maintenance employee association contracts. Secondly, strategy related to collective bargaining with other union contracts. And C, the third, was a strategy with contract negotiations for our finance director, our fire chief-elect, and our police chief. We've just recently exited the executive meeting and moved back into open meeting. I would ask you now to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joe, are you ready to discuss COVID-19 update?
I am, Mr. Chairman, and I see that our finance director is also on the line. So first, I'll start out with the, it's not bad news, but we did not meet our goal, or I did not get us to our goal of reopening Town Hall today because of outstanding issues that we have to be in compliance. Megan has done incredible work to get us to there, and she has updates on reopening of buildings. I'll defer to her on that, and then general discussion on COVID-19, if you will. So I know I'll be doing, resuming the calls that the Lieutenant Governor has. That's been pushed out to Wednesday of this week, so nothing pressing for tomorrow, but unfortunately, we weren't able to meet my goal of opening Town Hall today, and that's on me.
Okay, good, Joe. Joe, I assume you're, we're asking Megan to join us next?
Yep, so Megan, if you can go through your updates, as well as information you have as to when you think we can reopen.
Sure. We'll start with case numbers. Our numbers are still really low. We did have two new cases over the last week, so our totals in Harwich are 125 cases since the beginning with 24 deaths, and right now, we have four active cases in town plus one probable case, so the remainder have recovered. Massachusetts is seeing lower numbers day by day. We had less than 100 confirmed cases today, and our total for all cases in Massachusetts is 1,8768, with 8,095 fatalities related to COVID. Barnstable County, we're still also seeing low numbers day by day, with 1,535 cases in Barnstable County and 145 deaths. The age groups for cases has dropped down to 51 is the average age of all positive cases. I believe this is due to antibody testing. I see that a lot of the younger population are drawn to the antibody testing rather than the PCR testing, and that has dropped down our case numbers for average age. But hospitalizations is sticking strong at the average age of 68 for people who have COVID that are requiring hospitalizations, and the average age of deaths related to COVID is still at 82, so that has not changed. Cape Cod Hospital is down to one active patient for COVID, and that patient, according to the dashboard today, is not in ICU. Falmouth Hospital has six total patients inpatient with two of the six in ICU. So those numbers are as well going down, and that's a good direction for those to go. Nationwide, we are still seeing increases in certain states. You've probably seen the news, Florida, Texas, and some of the other southern states are now seeing the surge that we had seen about a month and a half ago. So those states were still advising not to travel to or from those states because we were doing so well here in Massachusetts. We don't want to start bringing it back in from other places that we're looking at higher numbers. The reopening plan, I have been told by the Department of Public Health that Phase Three will happen no earlier than July 6th, that's a week from today. We were told that each phase would be a minimum of three weeks, so Phase Three, which does allow for a lot more opening of entertainment venues and increasing gathering sizes, we should expect that no earlier than July 6th. And again, that depends mostly on those dashboard numbers that come out every day, and we want to see positive trends, and we're looking, we're looking pretty good with our positive trends. Reopening town buildings, we really wanted to try to have that done today. It's more complicated than it seems on the outside. I believe all buildings are retrofitted and ready for opening with their daily cleaning schedules, with the exception of the water department is still in need of daily cleaning. The Cultural Center is able to open to tenants on July 1st, and I've spoken to Carolyn about that. The administrative office can reopen there also July 1st, but start taking up by appointment only. We're looking to have that ready for July 6th. Most buildings, we're looking for next Monday, July 6th, and that's, that's basically because Town Hall needs a kind of a greeter type of person to allow the right amount of people in and out of the building without overcrowding. And we did have a volunteer from the Senior Tax Work Off Program start today, and we were ready to go, but we hadn't quite told the staff what to expect, so we had some roadblocks that we needed to clear up and clean up before we officially open to the public. So I think the plan for Cultural Center is July 1st for tenants, and then all other town buildings excluding the library, because she has indicated she does not desire to open just yet to the public on the inside. All those buildings will be looking at July 6th, that's Monday, a week from today, and most buildings will be looking at an appointment-only, open-to-the-public basis. Smaller buildings with smaller lobbies that can be monitored, and people can be told to wait outside one at a time will be able to open without appointments, like the Harbor Office and the Golf Pro Shop. The water department may want to just open by appointment only, that's their, that's their choice, something that needs to be discussed amongst the selectmen. Council on Aging has requested appointment-only, small groups, and not to open their activities to larger groups that may be allowed at this time. They would prefer to stay closed to the public with only allowing certain types of appointments. And Cultural Center and the Rec Department, those doors will be open and unlocked, and the public will be able to enter as of July 6th, and that has enough area and space in the building to allow for up to 30 people at a time within the hallways. And Phase Three will allow for a lot more in-person, inside activities that are for more than just kids. Right now, Phase Two allows for groups of 10 indoor activities for kids under 18, but Phase Three allows for adults. So depending on what groups have been booking those rooms, we'll limit those to the gathering sizes that are allowed in the next phase. But right now, as of July 6th, if we're still in Phase Two, the building will be open for people to go in and out and ask questions. The weight room is still closed in this phase, and the next phase, it will be able to open on a limited basis to allow for social distancing. Same with the locker rooms, they're currently closed and will remain closed until the phasing allows for them to open. DPW has a small, open lobby area also, not a high-traffic building, so that door can remain unlocked, and as people queue up to the windows, they can be asked to wait outside until someone leaves. And I think that's all the buildings. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions, I have a couple, Megan. I think you answered this last week, but regarding Little League baseball, does that, I know you said they could, the playgrounds are open, so they can play baseball, but in terms of organized baseball, is that, would that start with beginning of Phase Three?
So organized sports can have practice, non-contact sports, so baseball is non-contact sport, can have practices, they can't have scrimmages or games. So Little League right now could get their players together to do some drills, but they wouldn't be able to scrimmage or play games, and that goes for tennis and football and in any other, any other sport. Right now, they, they're allowed to practice non-contact sports.
Does that, Phase Three, does that open that up, or no?
It's not specifically listed in Phase Three, so they are providing that as it goes. Right now, that's a, we hope so, but we don't know for sure because they haven't told us.
Okay, Michael, then I-
Larry, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm not sure if you got the same email I got, but it was kind of a nasty email sent that the Board of Selectmen voted not to let the kids play baseball, and that's not the case. The Little League organizers actually decided to cancel the season, and some members or families took it the wrong way, and a social media post went up, but it is Governor guidelines not to allow games, and that as far as the town of Harwich is concerned, practices can happen. And from the Little League directors, they told me they chose to cancel the season, not the Board of Selectmen.
I did respond to one of them, reiterating what you said last week, Megan, that they could do playgrounds open, not organized. Second question I have is, and I'm sure we all do, I continue to get some emails of folks concerned about lack of wearing masks on the, especially in, you know, Harwich Port. I know you, I see you have the signs out encouraging people to wear masks. What's your view on that? Is that one or two sites or over, I don't see, I mean, I don't see a big problem in the, of course, I'm there more in the daytime than at night, but-
We did put up the electronic signs, one on either end of Route 28. We, that's the biggest complaint that we get on a daily basis, is the public walking down Route 28 and not wearing masks. I did get a concerned email about the restaurants that have seats on the sidewalk or right on the side, adjacent to the sidewalk. They're, they're on their own property, but the seats are close to the sidewalk, and I reached out to those three businesses, and they have scooted the seats back towards their buildings rather than towards the sidewalk. Some of them had space to be able to pull them back to allow for more space between the pedestrians and the seat, and the people seated. The port has their seats right up against their building, but they do own another four feet or so of land, so they had proposed to put a chalk line or a tape line or something to try to keep the walkers from being close to the patrons. I said, we'll give that a try, we'll see how that goes. We can only, we can only educate the general public about wearing their mask when they're within six feet of others, and it's, I can't say this enough, just because someone's outside doesn't need, they need, mean they have to wear their mask, and we get complaints all the time. People were at the beach without their mask on. Well, if they're six feet away from others, they don't need to have their mask on. When they're walking by someone, they should pull their mask up. Evidence has shown, studies have shown that outdoor interactions that are brief and quick, when you're outside, when you walk by someone who doesn't have a mask on and you don't have your mask on, or vice versa, the risk for infection is extremely low. It's time you're with someone who's infected in the viral load, meaning you have to be within six feet of someone, talking to them without your mask on for at least 10 minutes in order to get the proper viral load, in order to get sick. It is cumulative, so if you're sitting on the side of the road and you're eating your dinner, and 10 people walk by you that are all infected within the, within that 10 minutes, you could get sick. However, it's, it's an extremely safe thing to be outside without your mask on. So we do take all complaints seriously, and we are working with businesses to try to increase distances between parties, but honestly, it's, it's a low-risk activity, and we just try to educate people about it.
Can I conclude, Megan, that generally speaking, maybe in all, at least the restaurants and the businesses are working cooperatively with you?
Yes, yes. I've had very good luck with their cooperation. They understand how difficult it is. They want to keep their patrons safe at the same time as keeping the residents walking along the street safe. I did get a suggestion to make sidewalks one-way. It's not something I have the power to do, but if you guys want to discuss that, I, I think it would keep people moving without having to pass people as much. But again, it's, it's a low-risk activity, and if the businesses are, are able to keep their patrons a little bit farther away from the sidewalk, it will, will stay safe.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Any other comments, questions for Megan? Thanks again. Joe, I'll-
You're welcome.
-turn it back to you then.
I have nothing more on COVID-19, and I apologize, I don't know if Cindy Williams is on for support of the business community.
Joe's lost his video feed from his laptop, so Cindy, are you available? You want to make a comment?
I am here. I am, good evening, everyone. As Megan said, we do try to educate everyone down here in Harwich Port regarding masks and such. I have signs up down here, posters, so that people are aware. A lot of the businesses also are letting people know, if they are coming in, please put up your mask. They're very serious about it down here. I have a number of stores that have suggested to people, please put your mask up, and people have been a little apprehensive to do it right away, but the businesses down here are very supportive of the wearing of masks. We definitely saw an upswing down here this weekend, increase of people arriving this weekend. It was nice to see all the shopping bags, the people dining both outside and inside started last week. Restaurants are still taking advantage, and people are taking advantage of the takeout and curbside option. I'm actually down at the office tonight doing the meeting, and there are a lot of people outside, so it's nice to hear the voices meandering around down here. It's a great sign for the restaurants shops, ice cream shops, they've all been seeing a slow increase, so it's nice. Retailers are seeing more business, as they, as I mentioned, adapted their businesses to the safety standards and are enforcing the mask, the wearing of masks. A couple of great examples of some things I've heard this past week, increasing of business up in East Harwich, Consigning Women, which is a unique business, it's a consignment store, but she's seen lines of their business, their consigners wanting to drop off things, so that's a fabulous thing for them. You know, we've had some concerns about some of our businesses, some of the unique ones on how they do through all this, so that's been wonderful to see. Great story, this past week came a text from one of our businesses, and they were so excited, they had lines outside the store wanting to go in, and they had sold out of T-shirts. So this is one of our newer businesses, they were thrilled, and it's just, it's great from a Chambers perspective to hear these businesses doing so well. So thank you for everyone, Megan, Joe, all of the selectmen for helping us get everybody reopened. Definitely appreciative of it. The other industry that's really starting to see things come up is the hotels in the short term, rentals. Calls are coming in now, which is nice to make reservations. Have talked to a lot of our hoteliers, and they're seeing that. One of the most important things, though, that a lot of people are seeing, and I've seen a lot and heard a lot of this, that we need to really remember, all as residents, visitors, but, and the customers as well, these businesses and their staffs are doing everything they can to make their businesses safe for their customers and be responsible. It's a different year, and some of them may be short-staffed, but we need to all take a deep breath, support them, and know that they're here because they want to be, they want to welcome everyone, but we also need to help support them. If anyone knows of anyone that's looking for jobs, there are jobs available. Certainly, people can reach out to me, I do know some of the businesses that are looking for help, but just everyone, we are so fortunate to live and work here. We just need to help support each other. It's been a tough time, but we're all working together to be safe and responsible, so that's it from the business world.
Thank you, Cindy. It's always good to hear it's starting to pick up again. Moving then to-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know it's under TA report, but in the interest of her time, we have our treasure collector on the line. You all have the, as of, I believe it was close of business, but our treasure collector can speak to the sticker sales update for this year. So Amy, if you heard that, Scott, can you put the screen to, sorry, thank you, Jamie. Thanks. Amy, are you there?
Me? Yes, I'm here.
So the board has your report, if you just want to walk them through your update on the beach sticker sales.
Okay, so we are pretty much a little bit ahead of what we sold, well, as of last week, of what we sold last year to date. You can see the percentages, I can't see that, and I didn't think to bring a copy home with me, but um, you can see the percentages of the overall sticker sales from last year, and, and we're doing pretty well. Unfortunately, we did get a little backlogged over this past weekend because I think a lot of people waited until they actually needed the stickers to get them, even though we started selling them a lot earlier this year, so we're doing our best to keep up.
Looks good.
Good news. I know just my couple trips through Red River Beach, they're really busy there.
Right, I was there yesterday myself, and it was very busy.
Right, okay.
And I know, I went into the community center on Friday to get stickers for vehicles in our household, and was in and out in about five minutes, it was very quick.
Thank you, Amy. Joe, is that-
Unless the board has more questions on that item?
No, just good news they're selling, we're picking up.
Next item on your agenda, you have-
Excuse me, Joe, Michael?
Sorry.
Joe, just one question on the businesses in Harwich Port. One business that applied for outdoor seating has now expressed an interest in adding a small serving station and possibly for, even for alcohol. What do they have to do besides change their two-dimensional plan? They called, I guess they got conflicting information from Town, so they asked that I clarify what they need to do.
And you said they were looking for an outdoor small serving station?
Outdoor small serving station, and that would be for alcohol and food prep.
Megan, if you're still on the line, I know that the original guidance talked about food prepped and all that, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question. So the new, the Governor's order allowing for expansion of premises wasn't for new businesses or new, new functions, I should say. So if this is a new food service area, it would need to go through the permitting process. If it's a new structure, it would need to go through the building permit process as well. So if it's a change of use, it could, it could also possibly need site plan review from the planning board. So if it's simply a serving station where maybe they're putting a point-of-sale something or other, that's one thing, but if they want to put bar taps and sinks and food prep area, they need to go through the permitting process through community development. I would suggest they make an appointment with the community development office. We do, we haven't since this COVID started, but we could set up a go-to meeting with all four departments plus the client to talk to them all at once, to tell them what they need. But at a minimum, I would say, building, health, and possibly planning would be involved in approving a new process for food service and alcohol sales.
So just to follow up, Megan, if they're just putting a small, for lack of better description, small bar, no plumbing, no sink, no food, a cooler behind it with some of their beer in it to serve to the people at the tables outside, they don't need a permit, correct? Similar to, I guess, another business in Harwich Port that erected a shed, and it was under a certain amount of square feet, and that they were using it for a hostess station or something was the description.
Mike, you're basically talking like you're wheeling out a bar cart.
Similar, yes, thank you.
Like at a hotel reception.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to give them-
So it's a-
-without a process.
Okay, so I believe I understand which business you're talking about, and if there's no plumbing, then no plumbing permits are needed. If the structure is under a certain square footage, they would talk to the building department to see if a permit's required. If not, then they wouldn't need a permit. For health, we would want to know what they're keeping there, as long as it's just bottled beer, bottled alcohol, they wouldn't need mechanical refrigeration, and they could use a cooler of some sort, but once they put mechanical refrigeration out there, they may need an electrical permit, that sort of thing.
Okay, thanks.
We wouldn't allow food prep out there unless they amended their food permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I think you all were ready then to go to the consent agenda.
Next on your agenda would be the public comments and-
Public comments. Scott, has there been any change in?
I know, Mr. Chairman, no one has emailed yet, but maybe I'll take the opportunity for anybody that might like to speak on items that are later in the agenda. You still need to send an email to comment@town.harrys.us for anything that might be coming up later. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Steve, who moves your consent agenda?
So on the consent agenda, we're just going to maintain one item, Item A, and the other three items will be moved under new business, and will be dealt with in that section of the meeting. So for consent agenda, the minutes for approval, October the 21st, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? It's not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass unanimously, and then as Steve suggested, we'll move the next three items to new business, and Michael?
If I may, Larry, I'll just start. So I move that we approve the FY 2021 Visiting Nurses Association VNA contract for $4,000 as presented in the packet.
Second, Angie, Joe?
And on that one, if you could just, the VNA would be for the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Same with the Animal Rescue League, and so all three of these would be chair to sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a motion is made, and it's been seconded. Any discussion, other, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next time, Michael, you want to carry on?
Yep, I move that we approve the FY 2021 Annual Agreement between the Town of Harwich and the Animal Rescue League of Boston for $7,000. And authorize the chair to sign.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding between RSVP of Cape Cod and the Islands, sponsored by Elder Services of Cape Cod and the- and the Islands, sponsored by Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands, Inc., and Harwich Council on Aging, 7-1-2020 through 6-30-2023.
And authorize...
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve Go Industries DBA perk Sunday Entertainment License Renewal, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., 545 Route 28, Harwichport, with any current restrictions associated.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve Jake Rooney's Restaurant Weekday Entertainment, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside and 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, recorded or live music, 119 Brooks Road, Harwichport.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve Jake Rooney's Restaurant Sunday Entertainment, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. inside and outside, recorded or live music, 119 Brooks Road, Harwichport.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I move that we approve 2020 Annual Committee.
Don, you...
Yeah, there's a couple of changes before we do that.
Okay.
Talking to town clerk and getting some legal advice, we don't have to do the ad hoc ones that we have for the CPC. So...
Don, can I ask you to back up a second and talk, and just tell people what you're talking about? It's January news.
Yeah, there are committees that people are already serving on that we'd be extending them a new term of office.
That was our action tonight that you're talking about.
Yeah, and as I advised the chair late last week, the development was that they can vote this when they do their reorganization to give us the recommendation. They will not be without representation, which is what Dave Nixon was really concerned about. This is a peculiar thing because they're ad hoc. The people who are already serving can remain there until somebody either replaces them or they get re-upped. So I've tried to get in touch with each of the committee chairs to make sure that when they do their annual reorganization for the first meeting after July 1st, that they also designate their preference and submit it to us. So if you could just remove that from the list. The other one, actually, Mike is the liaison too. I had understood the Harwich Ad hoc, Ad hoc Noise Committee was specifically designed to not be a forever committee, so it wasn't supposed to be three years. We were going to be giving them a year at a clip. So on the list, if that expiration date was 2021, that would do all of the amendments, rather than amending the motion.
Yep. So I would just ask that Don makes the motion.
Okay.
I had started to, but we stopped, so now feel free.
Gee, thanks.
Well, it's interesting to...
I move that we approve the annual reappointments to committees as contained in the packet, with the exception of the CPC appointments, which are being held back, and with the change for all of the Harwichport Ad hoc Noise Containment Committee members expiring on June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Second. Ed?
Well, there's one other additional correction that needs to be done.
Okay.
We don't appoint the Finance Committee.
And it's too bad we don't.
I'll be sure to let my...
What was that last?
The Finance Committee is not part of anything that we have jurisdiction over. It's absolutely correct.
So they need, those, those two positions need to be taken off.
Yep.
And it's up to the town moderator to make those reappointments if he so chooses.
And I will accept that as part of the motion.
I second that change.
Thank you for catching that, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Any other discussion? Thanks for currying us through. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the contract continuation for interim Assistant Town Administrator Robert Lawton, as presented in the packet.
Your second?
And then, just if we could, for part of discussion, if we could just get a brief explanation from Joe, just the amount, days a week, and any other pertinent information for the public.
Joe's looking it up now.
Yep. So, well, several items. First of all, I truly appreciate and thank Mr. Lawton for what he's provided thus far. We had an informal discussion about a week ago, and he reminded me that his contract was coming due, and he expressed his right and desire to enjoy the summertime. So what he is offering is willing to serve for a term that begins with the fiscal year and staying until such time as there is a permanent town administrator or a new permanent assistant town administrator, or no later than September 30th, which is helpful because that'll get us through the annual town meeting if we can stay on that track. He would essentially be working remotely, and we would continue contact. So as you can see there, it would be signed by me, but that is only if the board agrees to the terms, which was similar to how you had done this for him back in January, I believe.
Does that answer your question, Michael?
I just wanted to give the public a brief explanation.
Right.
Sure.
Other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving next to then contracts. Michael?
I move that we approve Fire Station Number Two Change Orders, including one credit for $16,646.38, as provided in the packet.
Second.
Second. Norm, do we wish to speak to these?
Just briefly, we're nearing the end of the project. These are some catch-up items. I provided you quite a bit of detail on them. I'm very pleased with where we are with the project. We've had very few problems, and the contractor and subcontractors seem to be pretty responsive. We do have some retainage money on the project, and that's going to, that's relative to the epoxy floor, and we hope to get that repaired next week. Other than that, we are pretty much ready to wrap this up.
Thank you, Norm. One item, I call it my, it's a minor item, but to replace the bottom seals, is that, were those defective when they, when they came in?
Nope. Those are the rubber seals that were under all their apparatus doors, and they were put in as designed. I was, I was not pleased with, under especially a strong south, southwest wind, that we were getting some rain under them. And in discussion with Sean Libby, we felt that it would be advantageous long-term to put in a different kind of seal that would actually help with all rain when it blows, and also with heat and air conditioning, or not air conditioning out there, but in the apparatus world, but heat. It's just more effective and more efficient.
Okay. Thank you, Norm. I think we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Thank you, Norm. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to address the next, Michael?
I move that we approve the Commercial Marine Insurance Renewal Proposal, 7-1-2020 to 7-1-2021, for $88,310, as presented in the packet.
Shouldn't that be...
Don?
Shouldn't that be 7-1-2020 to 6-30-2021?
Blue this out one year.
Yeah, it's a year and a day.
Year and a day.
Oh, you're just correcting, go 7-1 to 6-30.
I'm counting that as a Scrivener's error, but it's shouldn't be...
And I, again, I apologize. I don't have access to my laptop, but in the, the proposal from the insurance company, it is 12:01 a.m. July 1st through 12:01 2021. So it is a full year, not a Scrivener's error in that case. That's the policy coverage time.
Okay. Would you accept that as the motion?
That was my motion.
The times?
I second it.
Joe, as I recall reading this, this is the same rate as last year, so they've, it's been flat?
No, my understanding is there was a, an increase of about $3,000 on the overall premium. And I would just ask, I'm going to pass this document around. You can see the authorization, Don, can I give that to you, from the Finance Director? Well, we had asked the, the broker for some sort of document that the board could sign, and we're told that once the board approves it, it'll be sent for the board to sign.
Okay.
So... It's for the chair?
That, well, it can be the chair, if that's the vote of the board, or all five board members or any subset there. Point is, I don't have the authority to sign, and...
Richard, you're right. Was, was the motion for the chair to sign?
And authorize the chair to sign.
Yes, it will. Still seconding it.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that moves us then to...
So the, did you...
The discussion carried over from next, from last week, is the janitorial services.
So you'll see the cover memo from the town engineer. So I met with staff after the board meeting and asked the town engineer as procurement to reach out to the vendor to, to gauge their interest in getting into finer discussion point of negotiation as it relates to specific sites. So as you'll see there in his document first, that when Griffin heard from the vendor that they would be willing to discuss it, I asked town engineer and our health director to devise the list that the health director feels needs to be done in accordance with the number of cleanings. You can see it that way. This resulted in a revised quote of $78,939. So if I recall correctly from the last one, minimal savings, but savings nonetheless. I would say, more importantly, since then, the finance director had conversations with representatives from, I believe it's FEMA and the CARES Act, and this item is 100% reimbursable between FEMA and CARES Act.
Okay, great.
So I know we didn't achieve the savings that we were hoping for based on what we feel we need for the cleanings, but this is something that we will see reimbursement on.
Sounds good.
And so, based on the board's vote last week, we did exercise that contract. If the board will indulge me in reading from my phone for a minute, the DPW director gave me an update. And let's see, that the staff is saying that the contractor did a great job this weekend with the beach bathrooms. DPW opens them at 7:00 a.m., the contractor closes them at 6:00 p.m. and cleans 6:00 to 10:00. I don't know what that's a reference to, but the bathrooms, they get twice, are done by 10, 10 and 2. All appears to have worked out. So it looks like our purchase is working well right now.
Great.
And we should hopefully see a reduction in people behind the bathrooms, inside the bathrooms.
Okay, Michael?
We don't have to vote this. We voted it last week.
So what I was asking is just confirmation by the board, because we told the vendor that. There was a signature. So the signature page indicates that the Town of Harwich by its interim town administrator is authorized by the board, and it's supposed to say as confirmed by the board. But if the board's willing to confirm it and sign it, we'll send that to the vendor.
Okay.
Any motion for that?
Yes, please. Or consensus.
Just consensus.
Consensus.
I think you have your consensus.
We'll record it as consensus, Joe, and I'll, and I'll sign it as a chair.
Thank you.
Okay, we've talked about the beach stickers, so we're, town administrators report, Joe.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I've got several items that I want to get through, and their updates, as well as new announcements, if you will. First, as a follow-up from last week's meeting, I did reach out to our Council on Aging Director and talked about the, what I've been referring to it as an outreach coordinator, but I'm understanding that it's an outreach for social services. As I mentioned last week, that's one of several positions where the departments, as we talked about, rather than rescinding the hiring freeze and the spending freeze, have reached out. And so I've asked her to come back to the next board meeting to present, because I'll have more information on the, on the search process for that position. But that also ties into another question as to whether the board would be meeting next week, July 6th, or if it would be at the chair's discretion. So looking for some direction on our next meetings. In talking with her, I'm not sure that we'd have the sixth, the meeting on the 6th. We're prepared to come forward on the 13th. We may be prepared to come on the 6th, but it's a very short turnaround time. In any event, the COA director will be speaking to that directly. I'll be presenting information on the search itself, as well as several other positions where we have to engage the search.
I guess from my perspective, I'm interested in what you folks think about the urgency of this. Michael?
I think the, I think the urgency has been there for quite some time. I think that, I think at this point, I believe we owe it to the Council on Aging Director to hear it as soon as she thinks necessary, but I would leave the urgency in Council on Aging Director's hands. If she thinks we should meet next week and hear it, then we should meet next week and hear it. If she thinks we should, if we can wait a week, then we'll wait the week. But I believe we owe it to her to, to let her make that decision.
Yeah. And that's where I am, Don. Michael?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's exactly what I was saying last week. I'd like to be able to hold open the possibility of a meeting every week if we wanted to have one.
Yeah. Steve?
I'm fine, absolutely.
We'll, we'll see if we can put that together.
So I'm hearing we will meet on July 6th, and that'll be an item.
It'll be a short meeting. We'll get some vital items.
What I heard out of that was if Emily thinks we should hear it next week, if she thinks we can wait one more week...
Then we'll do it.
We'll wait a week.
Right.
If, if she wants to, us to hear it next week, then we'll meet.
We'll do it.
So not a guaranteed meeting, Joe. I would say, reach out to the department head and see how critical she thinks it is.
Yep.
If they can wait the one more week, we'll wait. If not, we'll hear it next week.
Ed?
I mean, we're all going to be here. It's not like any of us are going to run off to Florida or something.
Certainly not there.
I know. I've been accused, I've been accused on Harwich old time as having hot dates, so I'm not sure, but I'll try and make it.
Okay. Joe, we'll, we'll leave it to, we'll tentatively plan for the 6th, and if Emily is okay waiting, we'll, we'll leave it in her hands.
Sure. Next item, there was some discussion and the board made...
Which, by the way, means that we'll need to do the agenda tomorrow then because of the holiday coming up.
We need the final lifeline tomorrow, post by Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yep, to be compliant because of the holiday. Yeah, you may recall, I did previous updates, but the concept of hearing officer, as you know, the board had authorized me to serve as hearing officer for an allegation of noise violation. That was a hearing that was conducted February 27th. I've worked with council, preparing my recommendation to the board, and that's why I'd made the reference. I'm prepared to have the recommendation come before the board next week if you're meeting. Otherwise, we could hold that out until the 13th. Whatever you decide to do, as I've stated on the record, and as you may recall, there was a little bit of a disconnect with prior hearings and prior decisions, where I've asserted to everybody that they'll all have proper notice. So that would be the board getting it, town council getting it, and council for the establishment getting it.
I'll hear everyone else. For me, there, this, I have some urgency related to this because we've been accused of holding off too long on these noise complaints. And so if we can do this next week, I would like to get it done. Any other...
Well, then we will be meeting.
...difference of opinion on that? What, pardon?
Then we will be meeting next week.
Then we will be meeting, but I've heard some, and Mike, you've probably heard more because you're the liaison of that committee, that we've withheld action longer than we should.
No comments.
No comments.
But I do think there's an urgency to some people to get that.
To at least hear it.
Right.
And the other part of that is it's, it's really just to let folks know that there is a, as you may recall, the board had directed me to sit in hearing of a different establishment. That hearing was scheduled originally for December 18th. The representatives of the restaurant couldn't make it. We had rescheduled for March 18th. Obviously, with the pandemic, we couldn't do that. All parties had agreed, and it's rescheduled for tomorrow. And what I would like to do is tie it all together to indicate that before I go into that next hearing, I've already made a determination and a recommendation to the board. These are two separate items and really have very little in common with that. Beyond that, there are, there is a hearing scheduled that the board had authorized me to do on an alleged liquor violation. It was originally being set up as two different hearings because it's two different establishments that have joint management. We reached out to all parties, and it was agreed that they would be combined for one hearing. That hearing is scheduled for August 12th, so that will occur as well.
Larry, if I could just go, to go back to next week's meeting.
Yeah.
I don't personally think, given the lack of entertainment right now, or lack of ability, ability for people to have entertainment, that it's critical that we meet on this next week if Emily's not going to have us come.
If we do it, then we can.
So if I, I believe if Council on Aging wants to meet next week, we hear it next week. Otherwise, I'm happy to, to wait one more week for that one item, if it's okay with Joe.
Absolutely.
I can live with that. Don?
Yeah, I mean, with that rationale, as long as the public knows, that's why we're doing it.
Yeah, I, we'll go with that then, Joe. We'll see. Yeah, I, we'll go with that then, Joel. We'll see.
There was talk about the community center, and we know that there are beach ticker sales going on. However, tomorrow, June 30th, there is an additional exercise going on, and that would be the regular, or the annual town election, with the polling hours there being in the gymnasium, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, truncated timeframe. But that portion of the building will be open for that purpose. And then, last but not least, Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's a discussion I do not relish bringing up, but I think it's a necessary discussion. And I know last week, there was an original attempt to talk about performance evaluation of, of me either as the interim administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator, acting as the interim administrator. As the Assistant Town Administrator, when there was an offer letter made, there was a statement made in my offer letter that on or before July 1st, there would be a determination made on step increases. I have material related to that concept, but I just wanted to put it out there for the board. It is an extremely uncomfortable position for me to discuss this right now, but if I don't, I feel that I'm doing harm to my family and my financial situation. As the Assistant Town Administrator, I am eligible for a step increase as of my anniversary, which was May 20th of 2020. The personnel bylaws are explicit and direct. It is not contingent upon a performance review. It is contingent upon approval of the department head and the administrator. Obviously, that part of the personnel bylaws is talking to personnel that have a department head other than the administrator. The standard for approving a one-step increase is satisfactory performance. The standard for providing two-step, which is the maximum, is exceptional performance. The, the delta between where I'm at and a one-step increase for the remainder of the fiscal year with retroactive payment would be $294.56. And I have other materials. But my, my point on this is, if I didn't bring this forward, I've been advised by our acting HR Director that I may be losing out on normal step increase that is achieved by other employees. So I put that out there for the board to be aware.
So the request is, is that we would, because we have a July 1st deadline, is that we would approve either a one-step or a two-step increase based on your, your existing contract.
Right. The, the complication, if I may, is the Assistant Town Administrator is a direct appointment of the town administrator. And under both the charter and the personnel bylaws and, and state law, that individual is not compelled to have a performance review conducted in public. The town administrator, as a direct report of the board, is compelled to have a public and open transparent discussion of performance. I leave it to the board to determine which one I am, but there is a milestone that was reached and passed, and I would be remiss if I did not ask the board to consider that. I'm not desirous of a discussion of my performance in public. I choose not to relinquish my rights if I don't have to. And it is a, from my perspective, a nominal amount, whether you look at it for the retro or the, the full year in question. So I would ask the board to consider some sort of.
Right. Michael?
If I may, can, can we, can you check with council? I mean, given that this is financial, and given this is a, I think, a hole in the charter and a hole in our bylaws, can you check with council if we can have an executive session because it's financial, and then the board can have a conversation and make that decision?
I can. What's that due to the deadline?
Too much tonight because it's not an agenda item, and I appreciate putting it on, we can put it on the next agenda. I'm fine talking about it in public if, if everybody else wants to.
But, Don?
He doesn't want to either.
A, I'm not fine with talking about it in public because we're putting ourselves in jeopardy. As I pointed out before, there is absolutely nobody who's ever occupied a department head status, which is what the Assistant Town Administrator's level is, that it's ever had their rating divulged, and it's not subject to the Freedom of Information Act. It's actually subject to the Privacy Act. It's an employee personnel file. If it were me, and we're not going to have the discussion about how to do this tonight because we can't actually vote it, but I thought it was despicable that we've had a guy acting at a higher level, that, that level would have been $60,000 different. I mean, this is two steps versus one step. When we have that discussion, we can't have that linked with his job description and his performance in a public venue if the employee doesn't want that to happen, and he just heard he didn't.
Is I, Michael, you have more, but I have.
No, that was really it. I mean, I, Don and I could go back and forth on despicable, not despicable. I can go back and forth with job description or not job description, or contract or not. I, I'm asking if we could put this into an executive session where the five of us could make a decision. You know, Don's privacy piece is spot on, and I think Joe just said he'd rather not have it out there. So why can't we meet in an executive session and discuss this?
Steve, and then I'll go to Steve first and Ed?
I mean, I, I would agree with Don except for the despicable, but, you know, and I indicated this when we talked about it last week. I, you know, I, I think it's clear that his review is not a public review, and I think we should abide by that, so.
Ed?
Yeah, and, you know, under normal times, his review would be done by the administrative officer, who is essentially acting in that role as the chief executive officer of the town. While collectively, in, in the administrative officer's absence, we collectively constitute the chief administrator, uh, chief executive officer of the town. And as such, I believe we should be able to meet with the employee in executive session to do their review and protect all the privacy rights that employees have.
Agreed.
My question about that is, is Joel, the, how firms is July 1st? Because.
Quite honestly, in this regard, I don't know. I'd have to defer to the treasure collector or the finance director on that.
Okay. Because the second point that Joel's brought up, and I think he mentioned it, is based on his contract he was hired, the, the one-year anniversary, anniversary doesn't require us to make a full review. It's basically pro forma, has he done his job satisfactorily, which is a one-step? Or if we decide he's done an extremely good job, do a two-step? I would suggest that if nothing else, we could easily go with one step and do that almost immediately. We, I have no problem coming back when executive, see if we want to go for a two-step increase. Joel?
If I may, first, for the record, there, the Assistant Town Administrator role does not have a personal services contract.
Right.
So its entirety is governed by the personnel bylaws.
Yeah.
To hopefully help the board, there was information presented through the chair last week, and, and based on the knowledge that a majority of the board has evaluated some level, and all members have said it's satisfactory. I am satisfied with that level of review and would not seek anything beyond what is meant to be a perfunctory step increase.
Yeah.
In other words, I could argue for you that you've already done the, the level to identify that three members have indicated satisfactory.
So then the question is, can we move tonight without being on the agenda?
I'd put it on the next agenda. I would say it's under TA's report, there's no listing, and I wouldn't.
This, this put.
Can't be done tonight.
This is on the next agenda item. At this point, I don't see the need, Michael, for an executive review on this, at, at this point. Okay, so we add it to the agenda item, if, if we, if, either Monday or the week following.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
And that mercifully concludes my TA report for this evening.
No, Don, I'm glad, you know, it's good that you brought it up. We go into the selectmen's reports. Before we do that, Scott, I'll just ask you again if anyone's weighed in.
Thank you. No one answered. No one.
I move to the selectmen's reports then. Now, Steve, I'll start with you this week.
I'm, nothing.
Michael? Don, I skipped, I'll come back to you, Ed, going into the end.
Just skipped over it.
I'd like to keep, you know, on the, go ahead.
Got to keep people in their seats until you get to him. You heard from Joe that there's going to be an election tomorrow. I just want to emphasize once more to everybody that there are two things that are on that ballot that have to do with changing the charter. They've already, those things have already passed town meeting, they've already passed muster with the Attorney General, but they have to be approved at the ballot, or else the changes don't occur. And they're really important. One of them converts the water department into a water, wastewater department, and it gives certainty about who's going to have jurisdiction over operating the pipes when they start operating. And the second one has to do with correcting something that went sideways on us. And the, the capital plan was originally the way it's being pitched now. Then it got changed into kind of a capital budget, which could change radically from year to year. The whole concept of the plan had originally been to take things off and add them on in a kind of continuous plan that had anybody entering at the tail end of it and working their way up through the years so that you knew what you were facing. If that, if you're fine with it being a capital budget, then you leave it alone. If not, then the only way of getting back to the original construct is to vote for that. But both of those things are on there, and if they fail, then the, whatever actions have been taken prior to that also fail.
Yeah. Thank you, Don. Ed? Okay, after I jumped over you. I have nothing, so entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We still have the.
Thank you all.